We're closed. One minute.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Six, three. Good.
Okay, make a motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lynch here.
Aye.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, does any board member have a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items before us this evening?
I do not.
I just wanted to mention that I have historically recused myself from an application for historic Pittsburgh since my wife is on the board and since we will not have a forum with my refusal tonight, it seems like that will be pushed off until the next meeting. But since that's on the agenda, I just wanted to mention it.
Okay. Oh, and I do not. I had no conflict or anything to disclose. Okay, with that being said, would the village clerk please give us the guidelines for compliance for public comment?
How about the clips note version?
Yeah, we can do clips notes.
Yeah, we don't have an hour. Um, let's see, here are the public opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also general matters at the end of the meeting. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by platform, but is typically accomplished through raise your hand feature. That is what we are doing tonight is through Zoom. If you wish to speak directly to the board, please raise your hand. If you wish for me to give your question to the board, put it in the Q and A. I don't look at chat at all. Please be sure to put in your name and address to the board. If no address or name is given, I will not be reading the comments. It gets too confusing and even though I know everybody, I don't remember where you live. Thank you. Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Uh, let's see. Speakers must observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So with that being said, on the agenda, we will defer the first item of the non municipal permit for historic Pittsburgh and we will proceed to the non municipal permit for Northfield Commons Creator Fest to be held on June 24th, 2023. Yeah, come on up.
Hey, Steve. Can you bring up another chair? Or can you put another chair up?
Can you bring another chair up to the table?
Thank you.
For us, yes, you can have a...
Sorry. I'm gonna do this with that soon.
Yeah. Sweet.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi there.
Okay, names, introductions, please, for the record.
My name is Bonnie Miguel and I am the owner of Notion down at Northfield Common.
And I'm Bianca Piazza and I run rock only events, so I put on artisan markets in Rochester.
Okay. And can you tell us about what you'd like to do?
Yeah, so basically, um, on June 24th, from 11 to 4, we would like to have a craft festival, basically, um, with about 30 vendors selling everything from candles, jewelry, handmade items, um, down at Northfield Common. And, uh, along with that, we would like to have maybe one, maybe two food trucks and a small two or three man band. No big speakers, just sort of a acoustical thing going on in the background. Um, I have given you a map. The first page is very tiny, but this sort of gives you the overview of the area. Second page is sort of zoomed in. Um, now, we've had the farmer's market down there in the past, so I kind of understand the whole parking situation and traffic flow. So, um, we would do it exactly the same way. We, in the same way we do candlelight night. So we would push the traffic off to the right, go behind all the buildings, and if they had to come up through, they could go up through Pittsburgh lumber and we'll make one lane all the way through there, um, so that they can come through. Um, the purple area is available parking. The blue squares are tents. The yellow area is where the band would be and the red squares are potential food trucks. Um, I think it would be kind of fun, you know? We haven't had this kind of thing down here and, you know, I, I've always dreamt about having a craft festival that went all the way down showing with tents all the way down, but I know that that's probably going to be impossible, but we'll see. So, um, that's what I'm applying for and I also have, um, oh, I don't know, maybe eight or nine letters of support from all the merchants. Um, not all of them.
If you could give that to the clerk.
Yep. Um, and Bianca here has done tons of these events and so she has all the contacts and knows the ins and outs of how to make it happen and so we're working together, hopefully if we get this permit.
Okay, so if I'm gonna understand, it's actually, you know, I was just thinking of the farmer's market. So it's essentially this, a similar layout as the farmer's market has been in the past.
Yep, so I understand that you have to, we can only use the spaces, the parking spaces to put tents.
Yeah.
So that's what we've done here.
That's how you fire departments away from you.
Exactly, so there's all the...
That's where I was kind of going with that.
Yep, so I made space for the thing.
Anybody that had an objection? Was there any?
No, no, not, well, not yet. Everybody, everybody knows. Um, I've sent out the email twice, um, just to make sure that everybody heard about it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's, people are so busy though, it's crazy, you know? It's like...
Yeah, I wonder about those who have lessons, like Lottie has the classes.
She's, she's, yeah, she's good with it.
And the brewery is good with the...
Brewery's all about it.
Okay, super.
I have another copy too, if you'd want to...
Oh, I just wondered if there was anything, any concern that, you know, like Pittsburgh lumber had an issue during the farmer's market?
Yes, so basically, we solved that by keeping that one end open.
Okay.
Because they get deliveries and stuff, um, as long as that end by the, the posts there, it's a fire line too, we have to keep it open. So as long as that's open, I...
So that's still gonna work for them to have?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Cumblings and goings, okay.
Okay, so that's good, yeah.
Any other, Justin, anything from you?
No, I, I see that it's, uh, to be held during the day on a weekend and so it doesn't sound like the, the noise that's sent is, it would cause concerns with the neighbors or with other businesses.
We're pretty mellow. Pretty chill area.
Yeah.
Okay.
It sounds like a better event, looking forward to stopping by.
Oh, good dancing.
Good.
Yeah. Sounds great. Steve, did you want to weigh in on anything? I know you...
I haven't seen it at all.
Oh, okay, maybe just take a look and if he's got, has any additional concerns about that as well, so.
Thanks.
You know? Well, I think it sounds great. I think it'll be, you know, it's a, it's a, another way to kind of agitate area, engage people, you know, in another way.
To be the first annual.
Ooh, there you go, sure, sure. And it's exciting that you're really lining up, you know, many vendors and things, so.
It's all local artists and so, yeah, supporting our community.
Exactly, I know, I know, I like that.
Do you think ours would let them do four?
Let them do four.
Are you counting other, uh, businesses and vendors out or, or, you know, businesses that they're all in on?
Yep, so far, I mean, I've heard from probably 75% of them. Um, I, but they all know, you know, they've sent the letter to them.
So if they all know, you've received support and, and so far, no, no one's objected, like, why are you doing this or?
No.
Okay, okay, just so we...
We, you know, we actually have a, a meeting every once in a while with everybody down there and we talked about doing the farmer's market and that's when they were like, no, we can't do that, it's just too much every weekend. Maybe once in a while was the general, like this.
Okay.
Yeah, how are you, um, they blocking out in front of the car lane to direct traffic? What's your thoughts on that?
What, uh, how am I gonna block it off?
Well, yeah, because it can't be anything, they can't, they hit here and be moved like...
Yeah, so we'll do cones and caution tape like we used to with the candlelight.
Okay.
Well, I think it sounds great, so I'll make a motion to approve, how do we let's do it, to approve the non municipal use permit for the Northfield Commons Creator Fest to be held on June 24th, 2023, between the hours of 11 a.m. to 4 p.m. Is there anything else I need to add, Jeff?
Well, you got, yeah, well, we're, we're well outside the 4:00.
Yeah, I was thinking of that too. Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Lynch here.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, we're gonna have some fun on the 24th.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Great, thanks so much. Thanks for putting this together too. This is really a nice event for...
Thank you.
For our village, absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up then, um, the refuse district discussion. Um, so, you know, I, I know we were having, where are we going with this and... If you, if you need to talk, can you do it in the hall, please? Thanks. Um, so anyway, just the refuse district discussion, we were kind of, you know, where are we going with this? There were some, some issues about it. I know that there was, uh, it was brought up that there was a survey that had been done of residents. We have no record of that, of, of that had any survey, including an aspect about a refuse district. There was another survey done several years ago, but it did not have, identify that and we're thinking maybe the survey that was mentioned was the one that the town did, for the town regarding their refuse district.
Might it have been in the one that, um, was done with the comp plan? There was a survey that was done?
It was not in there. No, that's, that's what we're saying, we, you know, we looked, we went back and looked at it. So, so, I mean, with that being said, I mean, I think, you know, um, it would make sense maybe for us to just do a workshop and really kind of sort through some of this.
I'd appreciate that because, you know, as Jeff said, it was different for the village and I'd like to know what the differences are.
Well, the difference, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Um, if we had an itemized, um, she's similar to what the town put out as a way of explanation because when someone asks me, I like to be able to just, here it is, here it is, because I don't want to misspeak.
I don't, I don't think it's going to be practically different.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be how you get legally different to set her up.
So it didn't, it wouldn't...
I don't know, can you get out of the town's district? I mean, can you suspend? Can you, can you, like, if I'm gonna wait about half a year or something, suspend the town?
No, no.
No, you can't.
No, it's, it's, you're all, you know, you, you're there and it is, it goes on your bill.
And that's the only big one that I can think of.
Yeah.
Other than that, um, it's just how you get there is gonna be different.
Well, and also I think there's some financial considerations about what the, the, the monthly cost, if it's a district, is lower. So even if there's snowbirds, because I know that's, that's a concern too, you know, people aren't always here year round and, um, if the monthly cost is low enough, if it's just added on your tax bill, it might sort of, you know, wash out in terms of what really is coming out of someone's pocket if they're not here.
And did I hear at one point that it would, it would have to be village-wide in order to be successful or is there a percentage?
No, not necessarily, not necessarily. It is an option because our village is small that we could do it, but we can also divide it off.
Yeah, you know, one neighborhood is absolutely adamant. You don't do it, there's another area that wants it, you do it.
Yeah.
I mean, you would do everything all at once, whatever it is you're gonna do and then, uh, there you go. The other question that would be good to have answered for that workshop is whether in today's market, you can suspend service from, you know, going away for a two week vacation, can you suspend and get a credit or you can, can you not? I really don't know the answer to that. I remember trying to do it, I've just gone away and...
Yeah, so, yeah.
So would we have to answer other questions such as how large a district must be to be considered a refuse district? We break down multiple districts, what enrollment period?
Well, I think, I, I think you're, you're going to, it'll be self limiting, but if it's not large enough, then the holler will not be interested in giving you any kind of reduced rate. I mean, what, they're in it to get...
But that's, that's a good point because maybe that's part of like research that we could do prior to the workshop, you know, so we could start to really look at that, like if three people do it, it's gonna be, you know?
You probably would want to just poll the current haulers in the village. See, we're talking about this as a village. What's, how small can we get and still get? And it's probably gonna be, the bigger it is, the better deal you get.
That's what, that's why it's working for the town. That's what the town is seeing, yeah.
So, you know, those are all questions you can probably answer with a holler.
Yeah, well, do we, any dates that we can float for maybe a workshop to kind of...
I would suggest going into April.
Okay.
Because we have a multitude of things happening.
Life's happening.
Um, really Mondays and Tuesdays, except for the 17th, seem good for the online calendar for the village, so.
So the first two weeks in April is what you're looking at?
Um, make the 10th or the 11th, I would suggest, or the 24th and 25th.
I'm out of town the 24th and 25th.
Oh, you are? I didn't put it on the village menu.
Why don't we...
I'm lying.
Right?
Yeah, you are. I have it on my, it's, I'm looking at the village website calendar, I want your time off.
How about the 11th?
So we had a budget meeting the 28th, is that right?
Uh, we have possible adoption budget on the 27th.
I said the 28th because that's when I returned.
We can adjust.
Thank you, okay.
So, so how about April 11th? Does that work?
April 11th, okay.
That would be a Tuesday?
You know, now, we've got, um, a new board, we, we don't even have a full board meeting with a new board before the workshop.
Oh, yeah. Oh, boy, yeah. Good point, that's a good point.
We could push it till...
Let's move it out.
May.
Next month, maybe, yeah.
I would, I would, I think that's a really good point.
Um, let me think here, how about the 8th or the 9th?
Okay, Monday, May 8th or Tuesday, the 9th.
Yep.
Uh, the 9th would be better for me. I mean, I, I can do the 8th, but if the 9th...
Okay, the 9th.
Does that, does that work for you?
I think the 9th looks good for me too. Yeah, the 9th is good.
Okay, we're, we're plugging in on the 9th at this point, May 9th?
It's all good.
Okay.
We look in like 6 o'clock?
Yeah, I think so, people are coming after work, you know, I think, yeah, 6.
Okay.
And, and we'll, we'll, we'll have a, um, a hard stop on that, so I would say we could, you know, it's a workshop, maybe an hour workshop, people can come after work, kind of weigh in on it. We'll have material ready for people to look at, I think, which would be good.
And we should just ask people to send me questions at each time.
Yeah, yeah.
Because there'll be post... Business owners that might have some questions.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point too.
I guess there's plenty of time to get materials and advertising done to get notified.
Do we know if the town, the town, do they do the business owners? We don't know.
So far, I believe it's only neighborhoods.
Right.
I, I think it is strictly residential, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I think that's probably the way we would, uh, because...
Yeah, I think you're right.
Organizing anything else would be a little tricky.
Yeah, that could be problematic, actually, for a number of businesses. Okay, so we have the date, so that's gonna be May 9th. Um, it's not 7 o'clock, so we'll hold off on our public hearing. Uh, let's go to item number four, that's the PCBA referral. Okay, let me, oops. And we have to...
My rough, my rustling papers for just a moment.
I know, it's, I always feel badly rustling papers because it goes into the microphone.
Would you like to get it?
Okay, yeah. Okay, um, is there a letter?
Yes.
I don't have, I don't have it out here. I'll call up the number one again.
There you go.
Oops, thank you. Oh, I do, I just, yep, you're good.
Sorry.
Okay. So, where do we want to start here?
I have a few questions, I'm happy to start with those.
Okay, let's start with those.
Okay, um, at first glance, and, uh, what I would like to address is this concept, first of all, of bundling, uh, three different properties, um, and I, I have nothing, um, in any application for, uh, from Mr. Tomlinson, so I have no idea what, uh, what that involves, where I would assume either number, number eight, I'm guessing, State Street. Now, number five, I understood from our meeting, previous meeting, that we had already approved, uh, for Thirsty's, um, his special use permit and his, um, I believe the word gazebo was bandied about there.
Perilla.
Perilla. So I have no idea why, I, I thought he was all set, so why he has bundled in with two other properties, in particular, number eight, for which we have absolutely no information whatsoever, ever, conceptual or otherwise. So we have no idea what we're talking about when the PCBA has requested that the trustees revisit the zoning in those, in, uh, for those three properties and we have no idea what the use will be.
Yeah.
So I, I just would have really appreciated a lot more information before being able to consider this request from the PCBA. So, um, in addition to that, I would think that we would want to revisit the comprehensive plan and what that committee determined at that time, it wasn't done arbitrarily or capriciously when they drew those, um, boundaries for the TDD and, uh, is it the VCB?
Yeah.
So I, I think as a board, at the very least, we would want to study that and see what their, what the thinking was at the time. Um, these are all, I'm just trying to put out, uh, ideas for us going forward and maybe having yet another workshop or at least a discussion, uh, so we can determine what our discussion points are, what our questions might be for the planning and zoning board. Um, I understand they, they have outlined, um, generally speaking, what their concerns or why they would feel this is justified, um, the change in the zoning, but I think along with this, the board might want to consider what has happened in the interim, which is there were the, the loss of certain parking spaces on State Street and Main Street as well, so overall parking, um, is a little bit more limited than it was. I'd also think, like, to hear from the business owners themselves as to what, what the concept is and what the vision is and, um, how it would affect other businesses in the area, so. Those are all my questions.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's before the board. Uh, good points. So, um, Steve, I know that you were, uh, part of that discussion, if I'm correct, maybe Steve can just kind of give us a little more background because I think Lily's asking some, you know, good questions on that.
Yeah, what it, what it really is, is about the lot coverage. See, the TDD allows zero, uh, zero imperious or pervious surface, the, the VCB allows you 60%, when you're dealing with the bakery, Thirsty's, Rachel's, and VCB property, about one, is 99% imperious already. So everything they do requires a variance, or they can't do anything without a bunch of variances because they're pre-existing, non-conforming based on the zone. That was the thought, is to bring them in to conform and so if they want to do something, they don't have to have multiple variances based on a reality, you know what I mean? They're already 100% imperious, why would you say they have to be 60%? They're already 100.
So they're already pre-existing, non-conforming, this is where we are?
Yeah.
Okay, just trying to understand.
Yeah, so I, I think that would, that's the, you know, kind of the whole theory behind this, to make them conform at least for that portion of the zoning code. Whether you would put them all on TDD or change the lot coverage, you know, I mean, there are two different ways that you could, you know, skim the same catch.
Okay, yes, and Jeff...
So I was just gonna ask Steve, so this is really just about area stuff, it's not about a use, correct?
Oh, no change of use.
They couldn't, Lily, they couldn't do a use that was not permitted in that zone? And it wouldn't affect parking? It's got nothing to do with the parking, as you really said, it's purely a, a lot coverage, you know, by the code.
Okay, so I, I really would like to understand this and I think it would have helped to have had some sort of a application or something in front of us, however, uh, Thirsty's, number one, they're not, it's not an increase, it's nothing, no changes, except they're covering what's existing. So why would, why would we need to consider that? It's not gonna hold him up from doing what he needs to do, is it? I mean, this is gonna take a while, this is gonna take the village a while.
Correct.
Okay, so, that being said, it's not gonna hold him up from doing what he wants to do, is that correct?
This, this particular case, but it affects everybody in anything.
I'd just like to say, this isn't just about Thirsty's. This is about...
Every...
Buildings, you know, that are within this area that actually have the same, same sort of issues as Thirsty's in terms of always having to go for a variance because they are not in, in this instance, the way it's being referred to, they're not in the TDD. And if they were, they wouldn't have to keep coming back to the board for variances. Because they're already recognized at that point about where they are with the lot coverage. It's nothing more than lot coverage.
Yes, and, and to me, it'd make more sense to, to the whole VCB as part of lot coverage because like I said, they're going one property on the VCB and I think it's a drip house that has some greenery, the rest on the bank, yes and no. I mean, 98.4% covered, you know, I mean, they're all, they're all just, they're imperious.
Yes, so the ask for this board is to just revisit this, take a look at this relative to how it's been sort of delineated in these zones, um, relative to lot coverage. Okay.
I guess what I'm, my question is, and I know you can't answer this because you're not on that board. Um, what I was wondering is if the planning and zoning board has, because it says applicant, is Thirsty's an applicant at this time in front of the planning and zoning board for site plan? And are they being examined because they have 100% and so anything that they need to do requires a variance? Yes, I'm thinking that that's the case, that he wants to put...
Yes and no, actually, based on determination, the perilla is not a, a...
Permanent.
It's not a, um, addition to the pre-existing, non-conforming, it is not a structure or building, so this, this, the reason this came up was because of that, but after researching the code, there is a way utilizing the code that they, that doesn't affect them for this application.
Okay, good. I want, I just wanted to make certain, so that, that will not be an impediment for moving forward.
It's basically an issue, I mean, that we can deal with maybe in code reading too, you know, I mean, just...
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, there, in a sense, the application you're, you think you should be looking for, and I understand that point of view, is the planning board's recommendation to you that it consider this. One of the bases for, um, consider for this board to consider a zoning change is on its own motion, uh, recommendation from the planning board or a petition by, I think, over 50% of the frontage lot owners in the district.
Okay.
So this is, this is the panic planning board under that code coming to you and saying, we think the trustees should consider this change. So that's really the application we're looking for.
But is it, um, onerous on our part to ask for information regarding the use of number eight because if it's a change in owner, if it's a change in use, that's a, a change in the special use permit? Shouldn't we be looking at that first?
No, 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 we wouldn't, that's not even an issue. This is a, this is a holistic view.
Of the district, the zone.
Okay, no matter what the use is.
Right, right, this has nothing to do with use.
Okay.
This is totally driven by an area coverage for, um, the VCB, the ACB, as opposed to the TDD. It's just an area, I don't mean to say just, but rather than being a use variance, which is very, very difficult to get.
Okay, we're using acronyms, I just want the public to know. TDD is what?
Traditional downtown.
Traditional downtown.
District.
And...
Or design, excuse me.
Village Center Business.
And village, VCB, Village Center, uh...
Business.
Business, yeah.
Yeah, so what, what the, the planning board is essentially asking, pointing out to this board is there are no, are these three properties in the TD, or in the VCB district have characteristics area-wise, you know, area usage-wise, much more similar to D, TDD or the intent of VCB?
you know, area usage-wise, much more similar to TDD or the intent of VCB compared to TDD instead of the VCB. So the lot coverage intent of VCB is 60%. That's aspirational. A lot coverage intent of TDD is 100%. So.
This, and they're saying this, these businesses are more likely.
More likely fits TDD than VCB in terms of that area issue alone. And that's the only change they're asking this board to consider is the little, the one component of bulk restrictions, which is one of the components, that's lot coverage.
Yeah, I think it's a good catch by the board. I mean, I think it's.
Well, I agree with Lilly. I don't know what the comp plan says. I think Lilly's point about the comp plan is very well taken.
Sure, but I mean, I think it's something to come back and look at, for sure. Okay.
So that's a procedural aspect.
Yes, yeah, right. Yeah, just an insert.
Yeah, perhaps. I do understand that the emphasis is just putting those three properties in the TDD district, which I understand is an overlay district. So TDD is also in the VCB, it's just an overlay of that district. It seems to me that in terms of the coverage, they do tend to fit better in that with 100% coverage in all those properties. It seems like only one of these three properties would have a potentially changed configuration that is allowed by the rezoning. Is that, that's my understanding at least. Is that a correct understanding? Because we're looking at the, so specifically, that would be the concept plan in number five, that seems like the change of the parking lot into outdoor seating is something that would not be allowed with its zoning under VCB, but it would be allowed under TDD, whereas the rest would just be, is that correct?
Sorry, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Steve, could you speak to that?
Because it's a lot coverage issue. So no matter how you use it, patio or.
Whatever.
Parking, it's still a lot coverage issue.
And again, it's because it's about lot coverage, not use?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just one less variance they have to apply for.
So they would need an area variance to change the, and perhaps parking regulation variance in order to follow through with the concept plan that was presented to the planning board? Is that, are those two roughly variances correct, or?
They have to, the Raisles or the Cafer has given area variance right now because they are on non-conforming, it includes its own requirements for 60% coverage. So that is true. And if they get a variance and the parking variance, then they can be allowed to have the seating based on accessory use to the primary function.
But they need the second variance to do that, not just the first.
The parking variance as well to do that. What type of variance is a parking variance? An area variance or a use variance?
Area.
Area, so.
Would you agree that? Pardon? Parking variance is an area variance, yeah.
Not changing to a different use.
It's not really, it's not a different use. It's going to be a, it's a specially permitted use for a food service. So how that food service is configured, what the requirements are, the code requirements is an area variance.
Okay, okay, just trying to play out what is contingent on this possible rezoning so that I understand.
Yeah, and it's, that's a smart way to look at it, obviously. But I think instead of two variances, one of which would be almost a slam dunk because of the character of the neighborhood, you know, the parking variance may not be.
Yeah, well, parking variance would be, it's, I don't know if you'd call it an area variance, but area variance is for lot coverage. The parking variance is part of the parking requirement in that zone.
Right.
So.
Well, it's a general parking requirement for, yeah.
Okay.
Zone, I mean, it's all zones.
Yeah, is it, I don't, you know, the comp plan may point out why they did that, you know, like say, research the comp plan on why they did not carry the TDD. Like I said, the other, I'm not sure the use is, the use chart is the same for TDD and VCB.
It is, it's identical.
If they are, the easier fix would be to change the lot coverage in VCB versus changing overlay districts into area thing. That can solve the problem right there too, just change the lot coverage, because like I said, it is. If, you know, I mean, if you have, like, hey, when we're at 50, 60%, great, leave it the way it is, but all of one are at 98, 99% coverage.
Okay, so, yeah, did you?
Yeah, just, I think that from a position of understanding the zoning law, the purposes of the districts, I think that just changing around the numbers of coverage is an easier thing to do than putting it into another district because you've got the TDD, which is supposed to guide the business to the very center of the four corners, and the VCB, which acts as a buffer zone. So by changing the property into the other district, you're saying that it's not a part of that buffer zone anymore, and it's part of the central list of the.
I'd still want to take a hard look at the comp plan.
Yeah, I think that's where we're going. So just in terms of action items, because you raised some questions, if you could email your questions in to Dorothea, okay? And we'll do a little more research, we're going to bring it back to the board. Jeff, we'd like to direct you also to, you know, work with Steve and on this, just so we're really kind of understanding where this is going and looking at the comp plan.
And will we also resolve to respond to the PCB regarding what our actions are?
Yeah, I would think a liaison would do that. That's the role of the liaison.
Okay, I hope they love to know.
Yeah.
The liaison is, at this time?
Trustee Keating.
Trustee Keating, okay.
Do we have any other, do you want to take comments from the public or?
Yeah, sure.
Anyone else if there are any?
Anybody wishing to weigh in?
I got nothing online.
You're just watching the show?
Well, I mean, I'm the neighbor behind the proposed cafe.
Name and address, please.
Charlie Simmons, owner, and my associate owner, Tucker Cooley, the Village Bakery Cafe. So obviously, I take a big interest in hearing a breakfast and lunch cafe is going in front of my breakfast and lunch cafe. So I'm not a specialist in any of the zoning and rules and the variances and stuff like that. I just know that when we had, when we built our place ten, some odd years ago, there were certainly a number of constraints and village codes and parking requirements and garbage requirements and all sorts of different things we had to do to comply with, which is fine. And we did. You know, it became my understanding that someone was going in Rachel's and they're going to put, you know, a directly competing business in front of us and put in a giant beautiful patio with no parking. And I was like, what the heck is this? We didn't, we had to have certain requirements to do what we want to do. And if you know me, I don't stand in the way of any progress. I'm, all my kids went to school right down the street at St. Louis. I live in Pittsburgh, I've been a business owner here for years and years. I own JoJo down the street. I own Five Street, State Street, the building. I own the Little Blue House across the street, which is my office. So I, I want to encourage growth in our village. Where I was coming from, this is more of an investigatory look at protecting my business and my employees and everything that we've worked. I just want to, you know, make sure that the, that the rules are the same. And when I heard they could go do that, I was like, how can you do that? Aren't there rules against parking? And so I sat in a Zoom meeting in the planning board. Everyone in the planning board was super excited and said, no problem, what can we do to give you variances here, do this? And I'm at home watching Zoom going, I've been here for, jumped on and down about a cafe right in front. So that's when I started listening to, well, why is that? And then part of the Zoom meeting was, well, we can perfectly give you a variance for parking, we can give you a variance for this and that. And then at the very end, it said, well, wait, there's one thing you can't do, it's zone differently. And you're not going to be able to put the patio there unless we get the board to change the zone.
That actually is an inaccurate perception. Yeah, and we appreciate your input on this. This actually is just, I think is really where I'm understanding from the Planning and Zoning Board, has raised a larger issue than just what would be going in next door to you, that this is something that would affect this particular district that is zoned. So, I mean, we appreciate where you're coming from, but I think this is a larger issue than just simply one single property. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, or Jeff, I think it's just looking at it, larger issue. Let's let Mr. Simmons finish and then we'll.
Well, as I said, I'm here to listen, and in Zoom, I was here to listen. That was the way I was pursued. That's the way it came across. Wait a second, you can do it. And I was speaking directly to the proposed new business to go with, which is the third name on. So that's why I thought, perhaps, oh, that's, I should probably learn more about this. So that's why.
Okay, no, and we appreciate, we're glad you're here. Yeah, absolutely, yes. Steve, did you want to just?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, when the zoning, a change in the zoning district would not affect the parking, because the zoning are already, have their impermeable covered. When you turn it into a patio, a parking lot, or a skating rink, it's still the same. You know what I mean? So the zoning change that they're proposing does not affect that application. It was just trying to make it so anybody, even yourselves, if you came in for some sort of wish to make a change, you don't have to jump to the extra hoop. Because you, you are what you are. You know what I mean? You're 100% impermeable. And, but the rules, you're supposed to be sick.
That's all this is, you know, so thanks for the feedback. Yes, Dorothea?
I believe Mike Reynolds is asking to speak with his comments. He did raise his hand, so I'm going to try allowing him to talk. Because the comments he's issuing is, he's, I don't know where the on you button is, so I think he's trying to speak.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to allow him to talk, and then I have another public comment.
Okay, then name and address.
Mr. Reynolds, you're able to speak?
It's Mike Reynolds, 35 Church Street. The proposal for the new cafe at Rachel's is a very unusual one. It's proposed to be a cycle cafe based on a European model that could become one of the most attractive features of the village. And they're on a tight timetable. They feel it's necessary to open, they're going to invest a lot of money in this. This is going to be a level terrace in front of Rachel's, a level heated terrace. And the timetable is very tight. They're hoping, they feel they need to open by August, and getting the approvals is a little quicker with this zoning change. So, so I thought he might be interested in that background, that's all.
Thanks so much, Mike. What's, that application's not before us tonight. It is not about the cafe. This is a separate discussion about a zoning change in a district that has nothing to do with use. Thanks though for chiming in. That's not the agenda item before us this evening. Okay, anything else?
Yes, Peggy Caravera, 81 South Main. This subject requires further discussion. Also, please consider handicap access.
All of which we're doing. Thank you, Peg. Okay, so we need to do some more research, as I've said. We're going to, Lilly, if you can, you know, the questions and the things that you're answering, we know we need to revisit our comp plan, certainly. The direction to our attorney is to work with you, Steve, and we'll, you know, any questions you have, obviously, any, anybody from the board, let's get them to Dorothea so we can start, you know, moving forward on this and seeing how we want to proceed. Okay, yes.
One other comment, I think that if the desire is for this to be a fast process, looking for a zoning change is probably barking up the wrong tree.
Yeah.
Due to the statutory requirements in the filing and the public notices, that's not going to happen very quickly at all, so I think that might not be the motive here.
Yeah, I don't think it is the motive, and I think this is really, again, I'm going to say this on the record, this is separate from any other application. We're not looking at an application tonight. We are looking at a request from our Planning and Zoning Board to look at the zoning in a district in our code. That's the request tonight. And the action item is that we're going to research it, we're going to get more information, see how things line up with our comprehensive plan, and then bring it back to the board and the public and move forward. Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A code change does not fast track this.
Yeah, yeah, code changes are a big deal.
Code change does not fast track this project. The other, whatever application might be pending.
Whatever they're doing, they're doing.
A code change would not fast track it.
Yeah, right.
Because that's, that's not the way we make our changes to our code.
Right, exactly.
Exactly.
Just from my knowledge, does the board have an idea of which meeting they want me to put this back to, the next meeting on the 23rd, or you want me to hold it till April? How would you like me to treat this?
Well, I think it depends on research and timing and.
Yeah. Just so I know, I don't want to get a bust in the.
I know, I know, because this is important, it's a request, so maybe not the next meeting because I don't think we'll have enough time.
Okay, the first meeting in April?
Yeah, I think that probably makes the most sense, you know, just for logistics here. Okay, next up is the consideration, what, consideration of hiring an employee for the village gardener position?
Yep, at 7:00.
If you want to be.
Oh, you're right, we're past seven. Time flies. Okay, so next up, Dorothea, we have what, the public hearing?
For Harla Day is.
I'm, I'm.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. This is for Harla Day Hots?
Steve's handling all that.
Okay, these are seasonal.
Some days.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, folks. Take care. Have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay, yep. Steve, any?
I mean, it's Charlie, Harla Day Hots, they've been here, this will be the 14th year, I believe, from the same setup. Depending on what happens with the low pocket part over there, they will still make sure that they leave arrangements for Charlie to still function. They find having a position for him or anybody else who would come in for that same type of function and have a place to work. No changes in hours of operation, days in a week.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the town, you know, Charlie and the town can work that out.
Yeah.
Based on what they're doing. The item before us is the permit.
Yes.
Okay.
A short-term retail permit, he has, I have a first slip from the town already to afford a use.
Okay, any questions on this?
I do. The one question I had, and I know it's probably been online and I don't have it in my head, are they maintaining the driveway between Main Street and behind the library when they redo the park?
Yes.
Okay.
Justin, anything from you? I mean, pretty much seasonal.
It's the same thing as spending, you know, where you've been doing it for years, and it's a good thing for the village.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Don't we open a public hearing?
Open a public hearing.
Open a public hearing.
Oh, sorry. I make a motion that we open a public hearing to discuss Harla Day Hots.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Trustee Lincoln.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak? Just the crickets? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public.
Oh, we got a hysteria, and that was good.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, are you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
I'm going to have to reverse them. All right, Trustee Lincoln.
Aye.
Trustee Lampier.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board. Any further discussion, or is there a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the, is it short-term rental? Yeah, short-term.
Retail.
Retail. For Harla Day Hots, do they give an address, or do we need to do the North Main Street address?
10 North Main Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we also, we also have dates, starting date and. Do we also, we also have dates, starting date and ending date for him as well? And those are already previously from previous applications? Can we just plug in those dates? They'll be slightly different, though, every year, slightly different?
Yeah.
It depends on the weather. You know, I mean, some years he stays an extra week, or, you know, some years he goes a little earlier. We've always done a broad...
Yeah, he requested his letter to the board from the beginning of May until the end of October.
Okay, yeah. If you would add that to my motion, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now, next up, the consideration of hiring an employee for the village gardener position. Okay. Zach, chime in for us, please?
Sure. So Mindy Barnes, she was responding to the candidate for a full-time gardener slash landscaper. She's got a background in working on her father's farm, to be fair. And she's got many acres that she knows around her house. She's a master gardener. And she is, she seems to be up to the task of being our gardener and landscaper. So I'm asking for the hiring on Mindy Barnes. Hopefully, the, I don't know the date, I'll be given Monday.
Yes, pending her physical.
Yeah, she has to... Her recommendation is only employees have physicals, so we'd be looking at March 20.
Sounds about right.
To get everything lined up, okay.
I believe Dorothea had references. And then, again, pending a physical by the village doctor. And that's...
And the hourly rate?
The hourly rate was $16.75.
Okay.
And are any special licenses required? I mean, is she going to have to give a CLG or anything like that for any of the equipment?
So the only equipment that should be really driving is the tow cap. Which, no CDR. And in fact, you don't even need a license for that. A driver's license.
Okay, really?
Agricultural.
Oh, it's an ag vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of use, so. But she does have a driver's license.
Okay, good. And she drives farm equipment?
Yeah, she drives farm equipment.
And she's very comfortable?
Yeah.
And, you know, we had a chance to interview her, and she's very excited about the position, you know, really looking forward to it, so...
And the references.
Yeah, and the references were good, too, which is nice, so. Any other questions for Zach? Okay. I make a motion. We approve Mindy Barnes for the position of village gardener, starting on March 20th, at the rate of $16.75 an hour.
How many hours per week?
It's 40 hours a week. She will be 40 hours a week for nine months.
Yep. Oh, for nine months. There we go. Okay. The motion's before you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Great. Yeah. Welcome, Mindy. Okay. Next up, the DPW and Village Hall summer hours.
Do you want to pick this up, or?
Sure. Last year, the Village Hall joined in with the DPW requesting summer hours. It was quite successful. We had no complaints, no problems. I think it worked out great for everybody. We're requesting the same thing, although we didn't have the same length of hours. Or, I'm putting that wrong. Same timeframe. I'll get to the right words. We're looking for June 2nd to September 1st to have that summer hours implication, which was that we would leave at 1:00 on Fridays. And we had adjusted our hours during the week to make up the time for 40-hour weeks.
And how did that work out in terms of, you know, was there any sort of hiccup? It seemed great for people, really.
No, people, you know, we posted, people got the message, we were here, and we were here to serve. And I think it worked out great.
And most people are out of town at their cottages or something.
Yeah, it's one of the quieter times in the Village Hall, so it was perfect for us. And it worked out, I think, for everybody involved.
Yeah, I think everybody enjoyed it, too. Okay, so there's that. Yep. And then for DPW?
Same thing we do every year. Start at 6:00 or through 3:30, 9-hour days on Thursday, 4-hour days on Friday. This year, looking to start on May 8th, which should be a week before the PG gets here. We've got a lot of work to do getting the production ready to go. But I'm anticipating a lot of traffic coming in. This place is going to be buzzing, which means that we usually hold that down. So starting May 8th through Labor Day weekend, and then reassessing from there. Last year, we did carry it through the end of September. The month of October was back to 8-hour days, and then we picked back up to 9-hour days in November for leaf season. So we'll try to follow the same pattern if everybody's fine with that. We are productive as always. We've got a growing team, and I anticipate a lot of work getting done.
Yeah. No, I mean, I think it worked out. I think it's worked out for the office and for DPW.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was great, because if there's something you need quiet time, you had Friday afternoon.
Yeah, that's true, too.
You had some hours.
That's true, too. That's a good point. Yeah.
Dorothea, could I just clarify? Did you say there is a substantive change to the Village Hall hours, or was it just the dates?
No, it's just that we close early on the Friday. We're open at 7:30 right now, and honestly, at some point, I do think I want to come to the village board and ask you to change it to 8:00. We don't really get any traffic during that timeframe. It's great for Steve. If he needs to meet with a contractor, he's here. He could still do that.
Just in general?
But in general, I really don't see a need for technically the Village Hall to be open at 7:30. But we can discuss that when we get to organizational meeting. But right now, we'll make up the time, and, you know, if we can leave early on Fridays, it's a good morale thing for the office.
Okay, yeah. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the DPW and Village Hall summer hours as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
We all thank you.
Okay. Well, we thank you as well. All right. Next up is the Juneteenth holiday, and I know there was some discussion about that, I guess.
Yes, in my shop, the discussion of Juneteenth being recognized as a holiday paid off came up. So we're going to bring it to the board and see if the board had any thoughts on it.
Isn't it a federal holiday?
It is a holiday, and I know the town recognized it as well as a holiday, and they're closed for it. They actually give their employees the day off.
And we don't. So if we're going to add a holiday, we need the board to...
Yeah, we just, it's an administrative action on our part to say, we recognize it, and it would be a day to give to our employees as a day off. Okay.
I believe last year you guys had recognized it as an official holiday.
Right.
But because it fell on a Sunday, you wanted to revisit it this year.
And here we are, we're revisiting.
Yep.
Okay. So any further discussion on that, or is there a motion?
The motion would be to recognize it as a holiday.
Add it to the Village Holiday. I would say the motion is to add it to the Village's official closing holidays.
Okay.
Because we've already recognized it, actually, as a holiday. Now I'm just saying, we are saying internally...
The next step is that the Village will add it to their list of official national holiday closures.
Yep.
That's one.
That's the motion. Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Next up, building inspector report. Thank you, Steve. Any questions for Steve, who's been busy?
I don't want to get worse.
Exactly. Yeah, there's a lot going on. I know. I know. There's a lot.
Would you see those plans?
We have a forward for it by morning.
Yeah. Lot going on there.
Looks like a Torah.
I, you know, I'm good. I guess, you know. Thank you. All right. Okay. Next up, DPW. Any questions for Zach?
Zach's report came in a separate.
Yeah, I missed the five, I missed the deadline by five minutes.
Duly noted, for the record. Missed by five minutes.
I would say it was a little bit more than five minutes since it was the updated package.
Oh, here you go.
Didn't give him an extra hour.
Oh, boy. Okay. Any questions for Zach on his report? Nope.
No, I don't think I can.
Oh, just one thing, though. I do want to just say, you know, we're all seeing that they're installing the new traffic signals for quarters. Do we know, you know, they put in the posts and everything, do we know when they're going to complete that? Have we gotten any feedback?
Nope.
Maybe we can...
I called out the cabinet.
Thank you.
He's actually in charge. I had not heard.
Okay. Yeah, because we know it's going to be disruptive again in that intersection, so we want to do another posting. Yeah, so thanks for following up with cabinet. We'll see. Okay, appreciate that. Yeah, that's kind of a thing.
Oh, I did look at that tree down by the house.
Two spots.
Yeah. When I was over there looking, there was one big one and then a smaller one, I believe. Doesn't look like anything's living in there. That tree is declining a lot.
What type of tree is it?
It's a Norway maple.
Oh, so it's invasive, yeah.
It's better off as like a natural habitat for wildlife, because it is approaching a tree at this point.
So like a woodpecker could live in there, or an owl or something?
Yeah, I don't know about an owl. It's not that big.
Oh, it's not that big. Okay.
Yeah. Woodpeckers, they're definitely eating in there. I don't know if they're living in there.
Is it a what?
It's, they're eating whatever is in there.
There's probably bugs in there that they're feeding on.
I don't think they're living in there.
You don't think it's going to survive the tree now?
The tree is in pretty bad decline.
Because our...
So what I was thinking is maybe we could top the tree and leave the base, the trunk, and some of the lower branches in place, if we wanted to keep it as a natural habitat.
So it's for wildlife?
For wildlife, because I actually did that in my yard for a woodpecker family.
Well, this is wood, these are woodpeckers.
Yeah, and this was when I lived in Florida, and so I just, I took the top off because I was worried about it, you know, as to...
I did have a tree back here.
Yeah, yeah. And then they use it for a while, anyway. They won't use it forever.
Season after season, though, they don't come down?
Sometimes they do. It depends on how far gone the tree is.
What do you think?
Yeah.
I mean, it had leaves last, I mean, it does get green.
Yeah.
It does. I mean, but it's cut right down the center because the wires go through.
Yeah.
So Zach, what you're proposing then would be to take down those branches that are compromised?
Yeah, just because I see them being a hazard. I'm surprised they haven't come down, honestly, yeah. But it's only a matter of time until they do.
And then leave it for now, at least for the birds?
Just to make it so there aren't, you know, deadly limbs that could potentially hurt someone or something. So get rid of the upper limbs and keep the lower part of the tree.
I'd like to give that a try, if it's possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because then they'll come and peck on your house. That's true.
That's a great point.
By the way, by the way, woodpeckers peck on your house. They cannot stand the smell of mint. Put mouthwash in a spray bottle and spray the side of your house, and they will go away.
They don't like hoses either.
Yeah, they don't like hoses. They don't like pennies in the coffee can.
And almost TV's on first line through the home.
That's, well, yeah, that's another thing.
I didn't know they could smell. A woodpecker can smell?
They don't like mint. I've done it. They just, they never come back.
I think that's how they get the scent of the bugs.
Yeah, I think so, too. Yeah.
Air faster than a ham and stroop.
Who knew?
I'm serious. I had one come around the deck and one of them pulls, and it's like, I go walk out of the garden for like 10 minutes.
Yep, I know. They're fast.
Fast, very fast. It's like a big drill.
Okay, well, woodpecker update, and we're good. Okay. Cover all the bases here, don't we? Okay, next up is the treasurer's report, please.
Great. I'm thrilled that there will be no homeless woodpeckers.
Yeah.
We have the bill pay in front of you. Sorry. I'm really happy for them. Is there any question on any of the bills?
No, but I do have a comment, and it looks like we had a good year for salt and snow removal. And so that stays in the, that's an unusual thing, so. It ain't over yet.
It ain't over yet.
Just stay a little longer. Be careful with that, too.
I'm knocking on wood, as Lily said that. I'm feeling confident, but I'll punctuate that more in April with a yahoo. But right now, no, I'm feeling confident on that number. But we'll talk all financials, so. Any questions on the bill pay, though, so we can move that forward?
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill pay as submitted.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lightkit?
Aye.
Trustee Lampier?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, so that's the first part. So then, you received January financials, which these were a meeting late, and I do apologize, but we're right on target. And I have received the bank rec, well, not the bank records, but the bank statements for February. So if the world turns on the right spin, you'll have that for your next meeting. But everything is in order. There was a few negatives. Some, you know, are predictable. Some were unpredictable. A lot of them were unpredictable. The labor ones are always hard for me to predict. Those showed up. The negatives showed up in the yellow, and I hope they printed to the color.
Yes, it did. It came through.
You know, it gets tricky trying to get color to print. And then there's the big pink. The reason the pink is under the health benefits. And this is something I did tell the board a while ago with our staff, you know, we... The best way we could budget for healthcare is to anticipate we're going to cover every employee. That would put a heavy strain on the village, so we don't do it that way. But we had something happen. We had employees change. People come in, less, more employees taking the healthcare. We had employees that didn't take our healthcare take our healthcare. This is going to create a negative. Right now, I can fully see we're going to go negative because I think I have in there enough to get through one healthcare payment. So to anticipate that change, you'll see, I did create a budget transfer of about $22,000, is what I'm crossing fingers and toes that'll get us through the end of the year. And I did swipe a little from salt to help cover that, so I am knocking on wood. But I really, looking at the numbers overall, I'm still very positive. Our revenues are higher than our expenditures, so we're doing everything right at this moment. I already know the February story, where we've already seen our tax, sales tax, which I shared with the board at previous meeting, so we are doing good. Is there any questions or concerns? Our fund balances look great in both funds. So we are sitting in a good position.
I just had a couple of questions, and maybe, since you mentioned the transfers, too, we can just kind of touch on both of those and then approve both of them quickly. My questions were about the, you mentioned the healthcare, and you explained why that was larger. That's the biggest part of the transfers.
It is a huge part of it.
So that makes sense to me. The, we went over the budget by a couple hundred dollars in the GIS collaborative. What was...
That's a contract that the village had, and unfortunately, it must escalate every year because I have percentage.
With the town, yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't have that information. That is something I am going to check with our firm budget to see if I have it. Like you said, that was one thing I did not anticipate because, you know, I'm thinking we're a set contract, but I think it's an escalating thing every year. They probably put in like a 2% or 3% cost of living increase on that.
Not a big deal. I was just curious. The other one that I was curious about was the Village Hall. Was that fire-related?
No, that actually, that actually is the roof. We did the roof. When we got the roof quote, it was 18. It actually was 21.
Okay.
So that did hurt. We are going to see that line, and actually, I'm debating whether to create a separate line in the budget for the fire damage, because we are going to have invoices coming in that is going to go negative.
Before insurance.
Before insurance takes place.
I think that'd be good. I like that idea.
Yeah, because it'll be more trackable, because we are going to have multitude of things that I'm going to be bringing to the board, and this is leading to the discussion I want to have with the board that I've had with the mayor, I've had with, we've had with the fire department, we've had with Steve. We have overall concerns over, we do not have, and we're unable to be conclusive with what caused the fire.
Yeah, that was on the, from the insurance company.
That was from the insurance.
The side of the department still hasn't issued their report.
Right. We haven't received that. The insurance company, they're dropping the investigation because they cannot get to a final determination. They said, what could have caused it? They're not sure. Could it have been in the heat tapes? They can't make that determination. It could have been a bird's nest in there. It could have been a multitude of things. The problem is, with the Village Hall, we've had electrical issues over the years for a long time. We did invest some money into the electrical. The problem is... The problem is we have a lot of electrical areas in the attic, the basement, that we have so many sub panels. We need to increase the service from 200 to 400. I'm talking in language I don't understand at all, so.
Why don't we have Steve chime in too and help us out?
Help me out.
Because you've done the inspections.
We're basically maxed out at this point.
Yeah.
And if we wanna make the upgrades and put a charger, an EV charger out back, I mean, you might squeak by with what we have, but why? You know, and, and you really want to report a charger. You want the nice, the, the best charger we can get. And, and the panels that we have are not served at this point. And there are, there are a few issues. You know, if we start going on this building, you know, the attic has open boxes all over it. There's loose plugs in here. Um, I will say that the sidewalk setup that you have when that's running, go down and put your hand on the conduit holder. Very warm.
Oh, dear.
Very warm, so.
So what's, what's the recommendation you guys, that we're looking at?
If you're gonna assess where we're at, I mean.
Okay.
Get a price of what to 400M, so we can put in the EV charger.
Take a total look.
And then do the back walk, you know, you wanna heat net the other sidewalk. You, you can't do that with where we're at now.
Right.
Panels are at max.
Yeah, and they need to be traced. We need to know what switch is controlling what. We need to take care of all the open things, all the issues. Because, let's face it, we had four minutes before we lost the hall. This is, if this isn't a red flag warning that we need to take care of the electrical issues here, I don't know what is.
So let's, let's start in. Let's get, get electricians out here. Let's start to get some estimates.
I think we need to get estimates.
A look at this.
Get it taken care of.
I mean, this, this is the village's house. This is an asset of our village. We need to take care of it.
It's not gonna be a cheap fix. I'm gonna say that. But it needs to be fixed because of all things.
Yeah.
It's, we could have lost this building so fast.
It's frightening when I think about it.
Unless we got a timing, how have we been sitting here in the light flash?
Well, that was the other thing, that the lights have been flickering off and on. And they were flickering off and on the day of.
So we want to add this to our budget discussion for this year?
We want to add it to the budget discussion. It might be part of the discussion as we look at the back entrance and the band. Because depending on how much work we need, um.
We might have to, we would reassessment of our priorities.
Yeah.
We do need to, I, I, I don't wanna need to bring our bad news, but this very hits me on emotional level. Because this is something, we can't let maintenance issues go. And not that anybody let it go. I think it's just we aged out of our electrical to a point we need to really take some action.
Yeah. I, I'm in agreement. We have to take care of it.
Okay.
It's not something to ignore.
You know, it's not, the water damage when we had it in here, that was traumatic to me. But fire just, wow, it touches so many pieces.
Yeah.
Ken, this is a good topic and I guess we're a little bit off track from the, uh, the transfers and the budget. But it, it's worthwhile to talk about. Ken, does it make sense, uh, since some of the issues that Steve mentioned seemed like they definitely have to be addressed? Could we have somebody come in and give an estimate for, uh, both the urgent fixes to bring things up to code? So we can look like conduit fill for the sidewalk heating and make sure the, the wire gauge is correct and everything. AFCIs on, um, you know, external, uh, heating stuff in the gutter, whatever. Um, and, uh, boxes that are covered, junction boxes that are covered, that kind of thing. And get all those things addressed, because those are probably the most immediate need for fucker. And then break down installing a new panel or something too.
Yep, I think, yeah, absolutely. I think that's where we're going.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll get out and immediately, we just, I'm gonna bring this to your attention, is all this is coming to roost from the fire. Um, so, anyway.
Okay.
I've gotta try.
Meanwhile.
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 Okay, so let's go back to the, uh, I, I think that was, oh, um, the, the last question about the, um, expense on the roof. Was it a material expense that went over what they anticipated or?
You guys handled that, what really up there? Because we were like 18.7 with the roof and I think it went at 21.
No, the, the one we accepted was the 21. We had one a pole from, um, Stella was the one that was 18. But the 21 gave us a 20-year warranty.
That was a longer warranty.
Yeah, we only got a 10-year warranty with the 18,000 one. We got a 20-year warranty with the 21,000.
And at the time, we made, we made the decision.
Yeah, yeah, I took the wrong.
Right.
But either way, it really did come from.
From kind of, kind of longer standing, more reputable company.
Oh, yeah, they're very well known. Yeah, Bureau recommended them to, yeah. Yep. Any other questions for Dorothy?
Thank you.
Dorothy, anything else here?
No, um, just need approval for the budget transfers as presented. I have for general and for sewer. There's one for sewer.
Did we already approve the treasurer's report? I thought we did bill pay and then.
We did bill pay.
And we need treasurer's report and the transfers, or are they both together?
The finance, no, we should do, approve the financials. Thank you.
Financials.
Yep.
No, I got a motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the financials as presented.
Thank you.
I have a second. Roll call.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now the budget transfers.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfers as presented.
Thank you so much.
There's a second. Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Okay, so I got some various housekeeping things and it's regarding various penalties and a couple other items. So, second here. First one is sewer. How do you, how does the board want me to do this? Because I know in the past you didn't, I, they didn't want me really, I received whether we should say names, not say the person's names, how would you like?
Oh, I see.
I would just discuss that as a request.
I'll just go to the issue.
A request.
I am a resident. I'm gonna say the office owns the mistake made here. I can't say specifically, but we miss changing the owner for almost two billing cycles. So, um, I'm requesting that we waive that penalty for $22.10.
So moved.
A second?
I'll, I'll second. I'll tell the mayor a second.
Either way, yeah, I thought I did too, but that's okay.
I know I heard a second, then I went.
I said second. I just sort of leaked it.
You jumped right in.
I did.
Okay.
I really don't.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, and then the other issue is a more wider issue. Um, we sent out the bills, we printed the bills on January 31st. We sent them out that first week. And we're talking to the post office. I'm not sure what happened. Some bills, it appears, never got postmarked and sent to the homeowners till January, February 23rd. Okay? Which some of them didn't even receive until after the due date. So I'm not sure what happened. We have calls into the post office to find out. But I feel on a case by case, I'm asking the board to give me the ability to review it. And if it's caused from this issue, waive the penalty as I see fit. I know that's asking for a lot of curvy punch, but this is, I don't, I don't wanna hold homeowners to task because of an error with the post office. We tried to give 30 days to the residents this time around, so it wasn't a rush thing.
How many? How many?
I don't know. I have a couple right now.
Okay.
So I would like just to, you know, deal with them. I can see it because they can.
And if there's a question, you'll bring it back to the board.
I will bring it to the board if I find a question. So I'm just kinda asking for a motion for that.
I think it's a practical matter. I think that's.
It's just we'll speed it through because we're, the other part of this is I'm gonna be sending out notices to send things to pass to taxes. And I don't wanna pass something to taxes that was truly an issue.
That's right, not their issue.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Another issue relating to a water bill is.
For a sewer bill?
Oh, sewer. Wow, well, it deals with water in a way. The homeowner had a leak, which leaks, when they're in the garden, don't go into the sewer. And in the past, this work has seen fit if they've shown they repaired the leak to take an average of the usage and charge that to the homeowner. I have two residents that are falling into that category. And I would like to resolve their bills for them. And it's usually been a one-time thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
About how much of a?
Well, for one homeowner.
They weren't filling their pool or anything like that?
The one homeowner hit, I don't know. They don't have a pool. The one homeowner receives a bill of $620. The other homeowner received a bill of almost a thousand.
Oh, gosh.
So.
And this was just a water leak in their yard?
This is a water leak.
Yeah.
This is a water leak, so.
Oh, excuse me, yep, Steve.
I don't know how to ask this question because you're not supposed to reveal things. Because I have some good breaks down, might possibly affect one of those.
So how about, I'll talk to the board and if your information affects the feeling I have on that bill, then we'll bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so if I can have approval to adjust those bills to an average for their normal usage for the two accounts involved.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. And, and with the discussion with Steve?
And I'll have that discussion with Steve. And if it impacts in any way that I don't think they deserve it, I will come back to the board.
Okay.
Okay. Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, boy.
Okay, this one is an application fee. Um, we have a applicant that came in from the HPHB, received approval for some windows. It turned out there's a problem with the windows and they have to come back to the HPHB to be re, have a reevaluation. Is that important?
Yes, I, I will.
They, they're missing their application because of what they incorrectly done.
Correct. We're asking for a waiver of that application fee.
The second, the second.
Oh, the second fee.
Yeah, the second fee.
So moved.
So moved. We all moved it.
Everybody's moving.
Okay. Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Did somebody get a second on that too?
Yeah, I had Justin a little.
Okay, I'll, yeah, yeah.
Wow, I took everybody's movement as go.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the waiver. And then, of course, Dorothy, it is never done. I have a request from one of our employees, Peter Bessie. Unfortunately, I need to add funds to his HSA, part of the HSA account. Well, things we put in place is if they met their, if they needed the rest of their deductible earlier than the June 1st, we would go ahead and get it into their account to cover the issue. So I'm requesting the funding of the additional to the HSA for his account.
And what is, what did, um?
It's, there's a max, so it's $3,000, that would be.
It would, that's the max. What, what, tell me.
The full amount of his deductible for family plan is 6,000. We've already put three.
Got it.
Unfortunately, there was a surgery involved in, not to give out medical.
No, but, but there was something else.
There was something that triggered, unfortunately, he needs to pay the full bill. So he needs the rest of his contribution.
Okay. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Laitken?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer? Motion passes. Next. I got more housekeeping stuff.
Yeah, you do.
And I don't even do my housekeeping. Um, we received a request for the town, and this is, and I think the mayor could help explain this one regarding PGA cost. They're looking for the village to help cover or pay our portion for security, uh, miniature golf game and banners.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is sort of a, a joint effort, kind of similar, in some respects, like candlelight night. The town is, um, putting together activities sort of to, you know, kind of generate the interest within the village uh, prior to and during the PGA. So, um, they're contributing $15,000 worth of sort of, you know, events and other activities to, to happen. And, um, I think, what is the request?
2,400.
2,400 dollars. And that would be for us to support, you know, the effort jointly. And it would be the rental of, I guess, a miniature golf sort of thing. Um, and that will be set up, I think, behind the library. And there'll be a little putting contest prior to the PGA. And the winner, you know, gets tickets and probably some swag from our merchants in the, in the community. And then also to have banners go up to support, you know, and announce the tournament. And then, what was the last one? It was.
Security.
Oh, this, yeah, security for some of these events just to chip in the way we do with candlelight night, you know.
They're asking for a contribution of 2,400.
Yeah.
Which will come out of our, um, which line.
I would say our normal event line. That line is tapped. In fact, I just transferred money into that line. So I would, I'm gonna just say quickly, I'll take some money from salt and put it in there.
You salted it away.
You guys, forget it. We're just, we're done.
I mean, I could take it out of contingency. I mean, I could take it out of contingency, we do have some left in contingency, I hate to wipe it out completely, but I could take it out of contingency and well cover it.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
We're just making sure that it's-
That would be the line I had.
Okay.
That would be the budget adjustment to cover these expenses.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Is there a motion then?
Yes, I will make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfair?
Aye.
Trustee Lankit?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Let me just check little blue book, yeah, and that's all my stuff, I'm done.
Minutes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, here we go.
All right, I like it.
Four to minutes.
Except I think we have trouble with the few of the-
Yeah, I, I think we, we don't have the, the folks here, so the February 13th, we cannot do?
We cannot, but I, I do have a question about them, by my-
Sure.
Um, although I wasn't here. Uh, so, uh, the question is, and it's obvious question for the clerk, because they're her minutes. Um, on the last page, there's a statement made that I do not, I'm not certain is a correct statement, I'm not questioning that it was stated, and I know we can't change what was said, I'm just wondering if we should maybe go on the record, uh, for this meeting minutes to state that this is not a correct statement. And the statement is that you cannot have a full-time job and be a mayor. Does that mean you are not permitted to hold a full-time job while you are mayor? Or does it mean that it would be very difficult to hold, you know what I mean?
Since you're on it, I think it was a, I don't think it was a statement as much as it was a reflection.
Yeah, that was, that was another trustee talking about that it was difficult to-
You know, that's very, the-
The nature of the job had changed.
The salary of the job does not equate to a, it would, it's not-
Well, for the record, I would like to add to this meeting's minutes that, uh, you may hold a full-time job and be a mayor in a New York state, a village in New York state.
Oh, yeah, oh, I think, I don't think it was about that.
Not easy, but it's-
No, I think, and I think we can correct that in the minutes, I think the salary doesn't behoove it to be a full-time job, or it-
It's not intended to be, I think, a mayor's demo, that's why.
No, but I think what the intention was, and you could go back and look at the video of the statement that was made by the trustee, was they, they were indicating that the very nature of the job had changed to an extent that the responsibilities of the mayor had increased, so it would be difficult to hold another full-time job in addition. That was my takeaway.